All right, the meeting of the Committee of the Whole is called open at 8:02. Adoption of the agenda, the agenda is adopted as presented. Uh-uh, I'm sorry, I skipped, I skipped one step there, Mr. Mayor. Fine, let's go on. Disclosures of peculiar interests? None. Delegations and presentations? None. Notice of motion? Let's go on to the UCPR report. Well, I attended the Warden's supper the week prior to my leaving, and once again, we had no member of provincial parliament that showed up. And Ms. Sima did not attend the Warden's supper hosted by Starmont Dunn, Desmond Gary, neither. It was very disappointing. Let's go on now to committee and staff reports. A move that report concerning the fire investigation update be received as presented. Any questions? How much left in the contingencies? There are none at this time. I'm the one that decides this matter. I'm sorry, I just asked a question here. I'm sorry, please, please, please be quiet. Look, if you, sir, if you can't be quiet, you'll sit down. Look, I'm not stirring anything up. Yes, Mr. Wilson, it's a little over $100,000 left in the contingency fund, give or take, like I say. We'll have another report further down in the year. Fine, thank you. Any other questions, Counselor? Sima?
We're supposed to get some figures on the contract pending, Mr. Mayor? The original completion date was the end of September, and we're now projecting sort of like in the mid-February. I could do the math on that, so the penalties are, we'd be starting then. Yes, yes. Any other questions? Fine, all those in favor? Carry then, thank you. Item 9.2, wastewater treatment works plant. That I move that the report entitled Rockland White Wastewater Pollution Control Plant 2018 Annual Report be received for information purposes. Any questions? All those in favor? Carry then, thank you. Item 9.3. Yes, oh, I'm sorry, we're skipping over that. Let's go on to 9.4. 9.4, traffic and parking bylaw and administrative penalties bylaw. Whereas Mr. Mayor, municipal staff was mandated to do a full review of the existing traffic and parking bylaw, that the Committee of the Whole repents council adopt a new traffic and parking bylaw as reported and recommended in report number admin 2019-113, and that the Committee of the Whole also recommends council adopt an administrative penalty bylaw as attached to report number admin 2019-13, and that the Committee of the Whole recommends to council the parking changes outlined in attachment three as attached to report number admin 2019-13. Second amendment, Counselor Zant?
By the way, thank you very much to Mr. Vinaud about the issuance of this report. We talked about this during the break, and I believe that it would be wise now to take a look at McCall Street. Oh, I'm sorry. You told us that given the new margin we have to work with right now, this ought to be identified. Yes, it ought to be standardized. Let me remove mine. Comments then. But getting back to parking, winter parking restrictions. I love the fact now that we don't have a three-hour limit on some of our roads, but there should be some exceptions. For winter, it should be labor-intensive to have individuals, you know, put down signage that would say some parking prohibited in some areas. Could it be possible to keep the no parking provisions during the winter months, and then, and then have the parking allowed during the summer months, or at least the summer season, spring, summer, and part of fall? I'm just thinking about labor and trying to get all of those things. And then you miss, you miss one car that's parked, that ought not to be parked there, and you can't proceed with more, no snow removal. Mr. Cardarelli, I tend to agree.
There are too many variances that come into play. It's too confusing just to help out the communication, because this is communication-intensive. So one false move and one late move, how is that going to be interpreted by the residents? And I think that by keeping with what we have in place with regard with the winter parking bylaw, with the dates, I believe it was identified as November 15th and April 1st, and I believe we had some areas that were the 15th of December and March 15th, I guess where I'm going with that is that to be trying to clarify as to how much it's going to cost by making those adjustments across the board. So let me just make a few comments. And just to make you aware of why it was proposed, we were looking at best practices and trying to have the residents be made aware for that time that nobody can be parked at all regardless of the snowfall, trying to see how best to serve residents and also decisions with the taken by the municipality and so on and so forth, and enforcing them. So it's not huge for us. There are some logistics that still need to be coordinated and as soon as possible, you know, given vacation time. But it's not hard for us because we already get that information on an hourly basis through the counties. We have the weather forecast given to Rockland. Already our staff do get an hourly update on this. So what we can do is that when the forecast of some, some certain centimeters or more can be followed, well, we can identify the parties involved, then that bylaw would apply. So either way, it was, it was passed as it was. There was a permitting ban. There still has an issue of cars being parked there, of having a bylaw. The garage would be able to identify those vehicles being vehicles that should not be there. That all remains. It's just how we want, I guess, to have the bylaw section implemented. Mr. Grimaud?
Well, I understand your point, and we're going to try and help out the residents. But if I take a look at item J of the admin info report, and I totally am in agreement with the comments that were made. You say to individuals, when there's going to be a forecast of seven centimeters or more, we'll be advising residents by different means, but definitely not all people will have access to that. Those who park in those streets in that particular fashion, those people that come from the outside, won't be able to tap into that available information. I understand that you want to help out the residents to 100%, but it becomes, you know, a pileup of events on how to go about trying to advise everybody, and then after that, if somebody doesn't get the info, then that car will be towed away. But it becomes complicated, especially during the wintertime. Come back to ideas to council to make the, the population at large aware of the contingencies here. We're talking about seven centimeters. If we receive a warning that there's going to be a seven-centimeter snowfall, but there's a lot of variances involved where we'll be able to follow this particular policy and advise our residents. We'd already have trouble with the garbage pickup system as it stands right now. I don't believe that everyone will be aware of that when it's implemented. Well, could we have a report? Could we obtain a report of what you foresee doing? What are the means of communications that are going to be used? What is the strategy? I think I would like to entertain looking at it to better, understand, making a better-informed decision. Right now, like Mr. Grimaud has said, I don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot, given the amount of communication that will be put forward. Mrs. Collier?
Well, where we are right now, that's the state of affair, and it's sort of... Of course, it involves the ratepayer, but we have to make them aware of the law. If it's seven centimeters, get your car off the street. That's all there is to it. If someone calls, or if my neighbor's parked up the street, well, that's perfect if they say that, you know. But it appears to work fairly well in Ottawa when actually they do get that much snowfall. So in terms of, we looked at the number of methods involved, and certainly, part of the reason to approve this bylaw tonight is to have the discussion with you and that provisions would be approved next winter and not this winter. That's correct. There's a means of communicating with ratepayers and starting a campaign to make sure that they're aware of, of those changes, the same that we've done with waterbills. Well, I'm sure the city of Ottawa just towed the vehicles. We have people working on overtime right now just calling the owners. I hear what we're saying, but we're not in the big city here. I think we're looking for a fair medium for everybody. But the point that I wanted to get across to you that next time around that this comes around, Mr. Bouchard?
I get a lot of residents that complain about no parking during the wintertime, especially when you get into certain parts of Morris Village where certain townhouses and entrances where you have purple people in situation where they have kids and a third car in there, and it's also part of the gymnastics as to which car goes out, you see. And they're asking for more parking during the wintertime. Now, we understand that if there's a snowstorm coming, you know, I honestly think that if the residents are aware of this, to begin with, if this is the bylaw that they have to contend with, if it's going to snow, they're going to get a ticket. It's just common sense. It's just going to be a ticket or the car will be removed so that plowing can happen. Yes, we, we have the option of doing either or or both. But just, just so we are clear, what we've done, then, we've, we've tried in every possible way to make the residents aware of what's going on. It's something that can be done, but not, should not be done. Well, the first snowfall of the year, the first, you can have a fluorescent pink sheet, you know, put up and say, the next time that happens, you can get a ticket. That's one thing that can be done, is to get everybody freebie on the first snowfall. And you can also apply there or print the bylaw on the sheet. But I find, look, there was, I think, I think they've had, look, either you come back with another suggestion or we can pass, we'll, we'll stay with the old rules, or we'll open it up to alternatives. That's another option also. Fine, I'm sorry. Well, go ahead. I just want to know with regard to Mercury Road. I didn't see anything, what was, as to what was discussed with Mercury Road. Could we ensure that this is included in all of this here? Yes. Mercury Road, we encountered some exemptions concerning the bylaw in effect, and we had to bring about other exceptions to approve exceptions to parking provisions along Mercury Road, you know, and subject to adoption by council. We can do so as work is still being done. But when this will be approved, then, you'll go ahead and do what needs to be done, right? Yes, yeah. Once this is approved by council, that's fine. Okay then. Any other questions, folks? No, that's fine then. All right then. Fine? Fine, so we don't have to... So you mentioned that we could pilot. What would that entail, and when would that start? If we're considering looking at that. So taking the bylaw as it is now, yes, would require approval. We could put the funding formula in place, and then we could do it next winter. It would give us plenty of time to communicate. So the approval of the three-hour parking ban could start immediately? Yes, yes, that could. Yes. All right then, that's fine. I understand. Are you in agreement with the resolution as it now stands? Who's in favor of the resolution that's before us tonight? In light of his comments, fine. Yes? Fort Laurier Street, for example, there's, there is no parking signage put up. Are we still going to keep a three-hour parking, contingency on Laurier? There are some people that wish to take the bus and go to businesses. Where the time is indicated as a non-parking zone for, and for a limited number of time of parking allowed, that's in effect. The three-hour contingency that we spoke earlier on apply generally for the municipality as a whole, with exceptions, zones of exception such as Laurier, where what is now in, in effect shall remain. Do you know that little street on Dunn Street that is one-way? There are many condos in that area, and there are a lot of folks living there that, in those condos that stay there, that can park there. Is there a limit that they're subject to? Because this is a public parking space. You mean those angled parking spaces? No, there's a maximum of time applicable to those parking spaces allowed to visitors. You see, as things stand right now, however, there's no maximum applicable for those particular spaces. Well, you know, this was looked upon as a public parking area at that time, and there was parking reserved for people, you know, that live in that building or make use of that building to visit friends at a certain point in time. But that still removes available public parking spaces to the general public. Any other questions? Well, I'm not really in agreement for what is proposed. You know, we're resorting to a pilot project, and we have no idea as to how communications are going to work out. We know we're going to have problems with our roadway folks. Mercury Road is a beautiful example of that. If you might catch people unaware once or twice, and you're not able to plow the streets clear of snow, then, you know, you're caught coming back the next day and the car's still there. There are a whole bunch of conditions and situations that might arise, and this is what I'm looking at. It's a dangerous situation and a costly one. But there's already something in the bylaw that states that there wouldn't be any parking that would be permitted. For example, in Puyette and McCall, where cars could be parked less than six meters from a given area. Well, we might keep that, but we might say, maybe there are some modifications we could bring about to satisfy everyone, especially during the wintertime, that would not be restrictive in nature. That would not be restrictive. But look, I've had residents that complained that they would like to certainly have working winter parking. Yes, but if they realize that they attend an area where they attend and they have three cars to be parked and that, in an area that only accommodates two, you can't say that if, you know, I want two, three vehicles, a trailer or a boat, that the rest of my vehicles can be parked, you know, smack dab at the middle of the street, and then complain and say the municipality's not able to keep its roads open. Come on. I understand. That's when you'll get a ticket. All you need is to receive one ticket, you won't do it again. And if they do it again, it's going to be wonderful sources of income for the municipality, for those individuals that can't understand why a bylaw is enacted. Well, look. We have, we have tickets that we hand out that straightly, blanketly, black on white sets out that there's no parking. Well, I'm still thinking about the first snowfall. Well, you'll resort to a lot of advertising, having people understand what's going, what's awaiting them. Well, the city of Ottawa has 100 towing trucks that stand by. Well, we also had budget covering the overtime hours, certainly during the snowstorms, especially on the 15th of November, they proceeded to a major blitz. A lot of people received tickets. It had been stated, it had been stated far and wide, there was, that the bylaw was in effect. It was a big list that was drawn out on November 15th. It was logic. Time also involved in going about it efficiently to make people aware of what needs to be done. Given the type of houses that are being built in Rockland right now, when you're getting a lot of townhouses, you're getting a lot of those garden-style houses. There's a heck of a lot less parking available now than there used to be. So it's becoming to be an issue in certain places. Yes, but the onus is not upon the, the city to allow them to park along the side of the street because they couldn't find parking spaces. Yeah, but those four town councillors here will receive as much complaints. If they're in favor of the bylaw, they know what's what. Well, look, you know, if Brian says, well, I need three other bylaw officers because things can't work out during wintertime, and I'm working overtime. Well, that's why we're proceeding to, you know, pilot project. And if you need four or five more bylaw officers, well, we can just pile that in with the rest of the needs of, or monetary requirements of my department. Let's just decide what needs to be done. Both points that have been raised are excellent. I'm just going to ask you to vote, folks, on the resolution that is before us, please. Well, I can't vote on this if I don't know what the means of communications that will be employed to make people aware are going to be. If you want this to be deferred, that's fine. If you want to bring this back for further discussions at the regular meeting of town council and to determine this is how people will be impacted by the means of communication implemented, that's fine. But I believe we can defer to that. I believe in, given the next two weeks, we can come up with a report as to how we can contact the population at large, as to what the winter parking restrictions involve when there's a major snowfall. Well, Mr. Cardarelli?
Mr. Mayor, is it going to cost us a bit more? Are we going to be saving costs here, Mr. Mayor? I want to determine how much it's going to cost us. Is it going to cost us more to work this road? What are the financial implications to go, going along with this as well? Well, I believe there are costs. It's more as to what kind of terms we would like to implement to prevent parking from the side of the road. Right now with the ban, people are still parking on the side of the road, and every time our snowplows come out, we have our troubled areas across Rockland. So we still have that, and that's, that's going to remain. Whatever system you choose to implement or to put into place, you're always going to encounter this difficulty. The difference is, do you want to essentially provide residents with means of parking? And potentially, because of that, reduce the amount of cars that are on the street when you're making use of the snowplow? Or do you want to have any ban? You know, blanket ban or not have any cars on the street? And again, we'll have to... So you're telling us that with this, you'll have less cars parked during the day, during the day? No, no, not during the day. You're saying that right now they are parked. Now you're telling us that there's something like this with, given seven centimeters of snowfall, you'll have more people respecting this? Well, all comments that we've received are saying, for those people, from those people concerned, are saying that, you know, you can't park ever on the side, even if the road conditions are the perfect. Well, why can't we park on the side of the street? Based upon this, and we can actually change the way in which we look at parking and implement our rules. I can't not guarantee there won't be any cars on the side of the street, but I believe that there will be less cars if they respect the bylaw. I, of course, I understand what's being said here. And I know that the council needs a platform to notify each household, right? And that would be our intent. So certainly, we'll work from that, from there, from that point, and come up with solutions, you know. Mr. Sima?
Why centimeters and not five or nine? Well, it's because when we looked at it, it could, it could, when we look at the snowfall, of course, it's not an exact science, I know that, but we've determined that usually at seven-centimeter plows come out, and cars should be off the streets at seven centimeters. Well, why do you, why not five centimeters instead of seven? The difference in between five and seven? Well, it's determined at the Ottawa Airport. They have a weather station. I know, I know. We also have one. So if we say, well, oh, it's five centimeters, you can't park there in some areas. So you can't, you can't park there. So there's, of course, a communication that has to be implemented to be considered, to make people aware of what needs to be done. It also means that the city is literally on call 24/7. We already are. No, but the residents know, because it means that you have to on a Saturday at whatever time you decide, you're going to have to make a call and say, well, tonight we can, we can begin. And if you don't get it right, and find, you say, well, fine, there's no ban. Tonight they're only calling for flurries, but then you get a dump of 10 centimeters, your snowplow, your snowplows then can't go anywhere. I understand, I understand what you're saying, but it's part of the process we've implemented. We've obtained updates as snowfall persists, for example, in some, in some instances, and our staff goes out. Then there are automatic passages that will be taken care of. I believe that communication is would be quite simple. Well, communication, sir, is never simple. So for us, this matter, well, we have Mr. Kusino, he can fix everything. Isn't that right, Mr. Wilson? He can fix, well, he can work the screen and the budget. Actually, he can work the streets and the budget, this guy. Do you think he can communicate to 1,000 households? Mrs. Collier?
I just like us to move to this automated process system on our Ottawa automated website that would trigger a, a call or an advisement to all to remove their, their cars. Well, not all 10,000 residents will, will be made aware, but what I say is that we can communicate this type of thing now, so that after Christmas, you know, actually, communication process will have started, and people might start getting accustomed or attuned to the fact that...
And people might start getting accustomed or attuned to the fact that we can issue warnings as soon as a threat of a seven-centimeter snowfall looms over us. So we're going to approve this bylaw, but we have to fine-tune the communication process. All those in favor? Thank you. Do you have any questions to department heads? Councillor Grimaud? Well, I had one, but not for tonight. Mr. Wilson? Mr. Bouchard? Monsieur Sima? Monsieur Lallande? Thank you. Yes? I think, Mr. Leonard? Are all major private parking spaces subject to parking rules and regulations? Yes, they are. Do we go around from time to time to determine if the owners of these parking spaces are do respect our provisions? Well, the only time when we are called out is with regard to the approval of the site plan. And once the site plan is approved and there's no amendment to the site plan, then we won't let matters slide, certainly. All right then, that's fine. This is, I spoke with councillor Carderelli whereby there was a major parking area where there were there were no lines painted on this particular parking lot and there was a car smash-up there. Well, I would like to thank Mr. Villeneuve very much, by the way, Chief Villeneuve, very much. He dug into this project. It touched upon every department. And we brought you this report. Mr. Villeneuve was involved closely into that. He's, I appreciate his previous knowledge of this bylaw. Thank you, Mr. Villeneuve.
It's my pleasure, my pleasure. Also, that's it. Adjournment called at 10:45. Fine then.